This time we'll call to order the June 18, 2025, meeting of the Clearwater City Council. At this time, I'd like to announce if you wish to address the council tonight on an agenda item, please complete a comment card. Comment cards are located by the clerk seated to the right of the dais. When called to speak, please hand your card to the clerk. This time we'll move to item 2 on the agenda, the invocation. Tonight, I'd like to invite forward Reverend Ally Wood from the First United Methodist Church in Clearwater, and after she has completed the invocation, to ask you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor, Rector. Let us pray. Loving Creator, we give you thanks on this balmy evening for the distinct privilege to come together to do the work of our city. We are mindful in our democracy that there are some among us that are elected to represent the interests of all people, to do the good work of ordering our life together, and to keep us safe. We thank you now for our mayor and city manager, our city council members, and city staff. I thank you for all of the work that's represented in the agenda this evening, work that is so often done behind the scenes by unnamed participants. We thank you for all those who help keep our city safe, and who work with us for Clearwater and for its future. O God who sees, on this a week that we celebrate the news of freedom finally reaching those enslaved in Texas on Juneteenth, we ask for your eyes to see all people in our community. Help us to work and live for the interests of every person, that we would inspire the values of liberty and justice for all here in our beautiful city. I give you thanks that we do this work together, and we pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to introduce our dais. To my far left is our city clerk, Rose Marie Call.
Good evening.
To her right is our city attorney, David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right is city council member Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To his right and my left is council member Mike Menino.
Good evening.
To my right is council member David Albritton.
Good evening.
To his right is Vice Mayor Dina Techshada.
Good evening.
To her right is our city manager, Jennifer Corrier.
Good evening.
And to her right is Assistant City Manager Al Battle.
Good evening.
That will move to item 4.1 on the agenda, Juneteenth Proclamation. I'd like to call forward Aleah Cruz from our Diversity Leadership Council. Aleah Cruz and a host of others. Good to see you all here tonight.
This is the Diversity Leadership Council.
Very good. Good to have you here tonight. I'll read the proclamation now. Whereas people from all nations make up our country, who have been declared equal rights in justice, life, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas the Emancipation Proclamation made the permanent abolition of slavery a Union war aim and provided the legal framework for the emancipation of nearly all four million slaves as the Union armies advanced, on June 19th, 1865, almost two and a half years later, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, and announced the end of both the Civil War and slavery. And whereas Texans began the celebration of Juneteenth in 1866, and is the oldest celebration of the ending of slavery in the United States, and whereas on June 17th, 2021, President Biden signed legislation on making Juneteenth a federal holiday, enshrining June 19th as the national day to commemorate the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the city of Clearwater embraces and observes this national holiday, celebrating African-American culture, will continue to honor and champion the inclusion and diversity throughout the city. Now therefore, I, Bruce Rector, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025, as Juneteenth in Clearwater, and encourage all residents and visitors to celebrate this true expression of freedom and this country's value of freedom for all, and continue to honor the African-American communities, which are now a vital part of our country. Thank you all for coming here to accept this tonight, and would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I'll try to keep it brief. Good evening, everyone, mayor and council members. My name is Aleah Cruz, and I work in the Administrative Division of the Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm also a member of the lovely Diversity Leadership Council. I want to thank you for your time and for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. In 2016, at 89 years old, Dr. Opal Lee, a retired teacher, counselor, and activist, walked over 1,000 miles from Fort Worth, Texas, to Washington, DC, to petition for the recognition of Juneteenth as a national holiday. Her advocacy of the holiday spanning over 40 years apexed in 2021 as legislation finally passed, and Juneteenth is now recognized at the federal level. But it's only 2025, and the holiday is still quite new. May this be an opportunity to engage in educational activities, give back to our community, and to uplift Black businesses. May this proclamation succeeding our city's proclamations of the past be a testament to our commitment to addressing systemic inequities and commitment to social justice. May this continue. As an Afro-Latina, a Black woman, a descendant of enslaved peoples, as not only a team member of our organization, but also as a young woman who was born and raised in this incredible city, I am proud of the steps we have made for progress, but know that we can still continue to grow. Because when we are educated, when we are inclusive, when we are engaged, we can create something that is not just bright and beautiful, but something that will always be bright and beautiful. So on behalf of the DLC, as well as myself, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. We're going to get a photo up here.
Watch your step there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stop meeting like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We don't want you to get a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
This time we'll move to item 4.2 on the agenda. I'll call forward Marcus Williamson, our Public Works Director.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Marcus Williamson. We've been spending quite a bit of time getting ready for the hurricane season that's out there, so did want to say some good news. The contractors mobilized out there on Alligator Creek, so they're going through clearing a bunch of those down trees that are out there. So we really think that'll help with some of the flow from the Phillies stadium all the way down through a bunch of those subdivisions. So we're excited that they're out there actively removing a bunch of those trees. With that, we've also dropped a couple of the weir water elevations throughout the city, so that we get a little bit additional storage capacity in some of our areas as we get the heavier rains. That should help us buffer just a little bit more. We've also been working a number of ditches across the city where we're going back through and doing a lot more of the bank-to-bank clearing, removing some of these trees in various locations that dropped during the various storms. We've replaced the temporary pumps back out on North Beach, so they're out there. Our crews are checking the pumps that are out there. One thing we have noticed, obviously, a lot of construction going on out there, and we're out there trying to do some monitoring of that, but that's one of those items that would be helpful for the residents, and as we go meet with them next month, we'll kind of bring some of that up with the, if you can help us do some self-monitoring. We're seeing some contractors not getting good erosion control in. They may be dealing with concrete. That concrete flows off, it can go into our storm system, and then gets very expensive. So the little things that they can do to kind of help avoid that just helps everybody and keeps the system a lot more responsive. We're working on a number of grant applications that are in, so everything from Moccasin Lake. We'd like to restore some additional capacity in Moccasin Lake. We're working with some engineers to go back through, reevaluate what should be the depths of a bunch of these, what can we do to add some storage capacity throughout the system, and then going after that grant funding to help pay for a bunch of those items. We also heard the council look at the new technologies, so we've been doing some of that, some exciting new technologies out from the equipment standpoint, different processes. So we've been bringing in a number of vendors in, looking at different processes that we think might help us do work a little bit cheaper. Actually, Ed will be coming up here in a little bit to talk about one of those that's coming forward, and then also what might be some of those innovative design solutions that we can do that might help with the flooding. So with that, say bye to you. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Williamson? Thank you. That will move to item 5.1 on the agenda.
I approve the minutes of the June 5, 2025, City Council meeting I submitted.
So moved?
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. This time we'll move to item 6.1 on the agenda.
Authorize a purchase order to Bosch Enterprises, Inc., of Stewart, Florida, for two aluminum lifeguard towers in the amount of $137,025 pursuant to Section 2.563, Part N1, Part N A, single source, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, everyone. Marvin Pentigill, interim fire chief. Tonight, I am asking the council to authorize a purchase order from Bosch Enterprises, Inc., of Stewart, Florida, for two aluminum lifeguard towers in the amount of $137,025. This purchase will replace Tower 1 and Tower 6, both of which were destroyed last year by Hurricane Helene, and will be funded by insurance recovery monies and reimbursement by FEMA if needed. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Councilmember Albritton.
Oh, so I read the contract by Bosch, and I didn't see any pictures, but I did get online and see the, what they look like. They're aluminum structures, and they're easily moved, I guess, this time. So if we have another storm, what are you going to attach a tractor to and pull it?
Correct. Yeah, the old wooden ones we pulled by tractor, we did the same thing with these. They're much more durable. The wooden ones just kind of fell apart after a while.
Right.
They're much lighter weight, so they're easier to move. Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, I really liked the ones we had, because they were, I know that the architect Fisher designed them, and they, I really think they, it was a great thing to have on Clearwater Beach. These things look great, though.
Yeah, they're very nice. Well, put together, and they'll last a long time.
Yep, thanks.
They're safer for the lifeguards, too.
That is correct, yeah. They're much more sturdy. They don't fall apart as easily. At times, we had to repair them, and it took a little while, and so I think we're much better off with this construction.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.1.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Did you know on 6.2?
I approve a contract of sale, for sale of vacant real property with Modern Realty of Tampa LLC in the amounts of $725,000, further defined by address 7240 U.S. Highway 19, Pasco County, parcel 32-25-16004000C, 000040 within Section 32 Township 25 South, Range 16 East, located in Pasco County, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening. I'm Brian Langill, Executive Director for CGS Energy. This property here is what we've owned for the last 30 years up in Pasco County. It's along U.S. Highway 19 in Newport Ritchie. We used it for our expansion efforts back in the 90s and mid 2000s when we were expanding in Pasco County initially. So for the last 15-plus years, though, we have, we vacated that and went back to our main administrative facilities to operate out of, so we didn't have a remote satellite facility anymore. We just used it for staging and equipment and materials and things like that, because it's outside of the area where we are aggressively growing right now up in Pasco County. We're growing more in the central Pasco area now compared to back then on U.S. Highway 19. So we declared the surplus a couple of months ago, and we bid it out, and we got the bid in at $725,000, which was $75,000 higher than the appraisal price, so happy to say that we're going to get a little bit more money for than what we originally thought with the appraisal. So we are asking for your approval to move forward with the sale of this property.
Let's remember, Albritton.
Just curious, and maybe this is a question for our attorney. When Clearwater sells property, don't they claim it's surplus, and people can, other people can bid on it? Or is that just land in Clear, in the city?
Well, we did declare it surplus a couple of months ago, this property, and we brought it to council.
Okay, and so this is actually a contract for sale?
It is, yeah. This was actually, went through the normal surplus and invitation to bid process. Absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to the gen item 6.2? Hearing saying none, is there any further council discussion? Yeah, does anyone here from the public desire to speak to this agenda item on the sale of? Okay, any further council discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.2.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Gen item 6.3.
Authorize purchase orders to multiple vendors for the purchase of 10 refuse trucks in an amount not to exceed $4,194,187.92 pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warrantess Sections 2.563, Part N1, Part N C, piggyback purchasing, and 2.563, Part N1, Part N D, non-competitive purchases. Authorize and increase a purchase order with Louk Core Florida LLC of Tampa, Florida, for fire suppression, automated lubrication on seven of these refuse trucks in an amount of $85,000, bringing the purchase orders total to $335,000. Declare the vehicles being replaced as surplus and authorize for disposal at auction or trade-in, whichever is in the best interest of the city pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warrantess Sections 2.63, 2.623, Part N6, Part N C, Part N7, Part N C, Part N7, Part N E. Authorize lease purchase under the city's master lease purchase agreement or internal financing via an interfund loan from the capital improvement fund, whichever is deemed to be in the city's best interest, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, the mayor, council members. Kirvinson and Stollwitz, Director. Mayor, council, due to the continuous delay in manufacturing and long lead time, the Solidwizz Department is requesting expenditure authorization to acquire 10 refuse trucks ahead of the FY '26 purchase and replacement cycle, which starts October 1st, 2025. Three of the front-end and two automatic side loaders, one roll-off trucks, will replace already designated vehicles on the '26 truck. To strengthen the liability and to reduce costly rental, two new FPL trucks and two roll-off trucks are being added to the fleet. These additions address operational gaps which arose when vehicles are unavailable due to repairs, prompting the need to lease rent vehicles from previously RDK over the past year. Council, council member Cotton were instrumental in contacting ACM Slaughter. We were able to work with one of the recommended vendor. We currently work into a purchase of four front-end loaders being purchased, which is currently inventoried, and it will be available for delivery immediately. These trucks, currently there will be power diesel trucks opposed to natural gas, which actually will diversify our fleet a little bit, which allow, which allows operation to maintain even though we have one source of, our supplies are disrupted. The price for the in-stock diesel vehicles approximately $115,000 less, and then the ultimate vehicle motors on the city currently traditionally order. The four trucks are being purchased at $1,553,399.92. Entertaining any questions?
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 6.2? Hearing saying none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.3.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Do you know item 6.5?
Accepted 2025-26 Florida Highway Beautification Council grants for the beautification of medians on Missouri Avenue from Bayway Drive to Court Street in the amount of $435,772 between the Florida Department of Transportation District 7 and the City of Clearwater, associated with Project 2-SR595 and SR651, established by Capital Improvement Project, Missouri Avenue Medium Beautification, authorize appropriate officials to execute same, and adopt Resolution 25-09.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Mark Kader, Parks and Recreation Director. The item before you tonight is to adopt Resolution 2509, which will allow the city manager to accept an FDOT grant, beautification grant for South Missouri Avenue, and also be able to sign off on a memo of understanding regarding the maintenance. If this item seems familiar to you, it should be, as it was brought before the council on March 6th, 2025, wherein the council accepted the grant from FDOT. Unfortunately, at that time, we brought it forward, we did not put the resolution with it as well, which was needed by FDOT, and so I do apologize for that, but the approval of this resolution will kind of close that loop, and so with that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item 6.5? Not, is there any council discussion? City Attorney, read it.
Mayor, we have Resolution Number 25-09, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, authorizing the city manager to accept a highway beautification grant and enter into a highway beautification, landscape construction, and maintenance memorandum of agreement, with the Florida Department of Transportation providing an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 6.5.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 6.6.
Council, before I read item 6.6, I, just for the public record, to clarify what happened with 6.4, IT had issues with the purchase order that they were presenting, and so they yesterday pulled the item.
Thank you.
Okay.
6.6. Approve purchase orders to Burger's Power Washing LLC of Spring Hill, Florida, and Emerald Facility Management of St. Petersburg, Florida, for pressure washing and cleaning services of city hardscaping in a cumulative annual amount not to exceed $275,000 for a one-year term, beginning June 1st, 2025 through May 31st, 2026, with two one-year renewal options pursuant to invitation to bid, 20-25, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Matthew Anderson, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. The item before you is for a purchase order for pressure washing services. It's citywide. It was procured through competitive process. We went through the ITB on this. We had 14 companies provide bids. We have selected a dual award for this, one to Burger Pressure Washing, and also the other one to Emerald Facility as the secondary. These services are used throughout the city, not just by parks, but if you've seen a playground, sidewalk, a building, this contract pretty much keeps the entire city bright and beautiful year-round. As Rose said, it's a one-year contract with two one-year renewals for $275 a year, and I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to the agenda item 6.6? If not, is there any council discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.6.
Second.
Allies in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Do you know item 6.7?
Approve supplemental one work order and an increase of purchase order under the continuing services contract with Ardua of Tampa, Florida, for solid waste truck wash replacement design permitting and construction services in the amount of $251,748 for a new total of $499,295. thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars pursuant to request for qualifications thirty-five, thirty-four dash twenty-three, engineer of record consulting services and authorize appropriate officials executing.
Mayor, Council Member Curvinson and Amy Solowis, Director. So this is a, a request for, an approval for a supplemental work order for, uh, an increase on the existing work order, uh, for continuing services for Ardua Group. Ardua Group is working with solid waste and engineering to help us in design of our truck wash. Um, during the process, we have made some improvement to the, to the design and is requiring additional funds to help us with the design. Any questions?
Is there anyone here from the public desires to speak to agenda item six point seven? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
I'm, I'll make the motion. I did want to just say something. It seems like we've been discussing this truck wash with you, and I know you smile because it has been quite a while.
It has been quite a while, but, um, to be truthful, so it, it started as a basic truck wash, and as we, we evaluate the, the yard, the, the Solowis complex, which is a very small platform, we're trying to address some of the other needs that we're needing at, at the same time.
Well, it's nice to see you finally come in front of us and get you that approval. I move to approve agenda item six point seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point eight.
Approved the final plat for Forest Villas located on the intersection of Ings, King's Highway and Freedom Drive.
Good evening, Council. Kyle Vaughn, Public Works. Um, this proposed plat would create four new lots on approximately two-point-two acres. No new rights-of-way granted to the city, and the preliminary plat was approved by DRC on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, and I can take your questions.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desires to speak to agenda item six point eight? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Is none, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda item six point eight?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point nine.
Approved an increase of purchase order of Inliner Solutions LLC of Sanford, Florida for Stormwater Pipe Lining Section C in the amount of four-hundred thousand dollars increasing year two of the contract from five-hundred thousand to nine-hundred thousand dollars on a unit price basis pursuant to invitation to bid twenty-three dash zero-zero-three-six EN and authorize appropriate officials executing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Mayor, Director, council members, esteemed leadership, city manager, Ed Willmuss with Stormwater, here to present this item for your consideration and approval. This is a contract increase, uh, for Inliner in the amount of four-hundred thousand dollars, and we were basically requesting that because, um, as, as we worked through the hurricanes, I detail it quite well in, in the, uh, information in your packet, but as we worked through the hurricanes, um, this project got pushed and pushed and pushed, so it ended up moving from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six, and hence we hadn't accounted for that in this year's budget, and so we already have a lot of work planned for twenty-five, twenty-six, so we'd like to have some additional funding to cover this particular expense.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point nine? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Councilmember Albrecht?
Yeah, so, um, is this, uh, is this cleaning the Stormwater, uh, pipes or, uh, pipe lining? Is that throughout the city, or is that just North Clearwater Beach?
So this is a particular segment of a large pipe on Stewart Boulevard, and there's three, actually three pipes. They're sixty inches in diameter, and they go from one detention pond on one side of the street, across the street to a detention pond on the other side of the street. And so when, um, when Milton and Helene arrived, that particular pipe got blocked with a floating island, if you remember?
Yep.
And so in the process of removing that floating island, we discovered this pipe had a lot of other issues. The catch basin had issues, so this, basically, the liner is inside that sixty-inch, those three segments of sixty-inch pipe from one pond to the other pond. So, um, we found that there were holes in a pipe, and there was soil intrusion and, you know, settlement and properties, so this liner basically is a pipe inside a pipe. And we are doing it throughout the city, and that's the, the next item coming forth is going to be a, a contract with another contractor. We hope to bring on three contractors, have total of three, uh, because we've set our, we've split our operational plan into three areas of the city, and so our hope is to have one of these contractors in each area of the city dedicated to that area. So like the maintenance staff, as they become the masters of their area, so too will these contractors. So that's the thought process behind it. So I moved ahead to the next item, but this is for Inliner.
I got you. I know you've been inundated all throughout the city with pipe being clogged, and, um, I've heard about it. I know we all have from people calling, so.
Right, so I was at a, um, uh, event earlier today, Mark has briefly alluded to it, where there's a contract that, uh, contractor that has developed a process for lining the risers for sanitary manholes, and that will also apply for our stormwater, um, inlets and our stormwater pipes. So there's more news on the horizon, and it's all good news. It's probably the most revolutionary product I've seen, and it will complement the horizontal lining with vertical lining. So, um, it goes from making a repair, typical repair in a street would be many months long to excavate and replace a structure. This does it in five hours with no street closure.
Okay, very good.
I'm excited about it.
Okay, is there a motion or any further discussion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point nine?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Agenda item six point ten.
Approved to convey a perpetual ten-foot sidewalk easement to the State of Florida Department of Transportation as further defined the east ten feet of lots five and six, block eight, Magnolia Park, according to the map or plat thereof, recorded in plat book three, page forty-three of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, in support of the proposed city hall development at two-hundred South Myrtle Avenue.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, Mayor. Council members. Robert Casma, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. In brief, the item before you this evening is the presented perpetual Florida Department of Transportation ten-foot sidewalk easement, which is in direct support of the new city hall parcel, now under construction. During departmental review, a water line was identified that was within this easement, and all future plans have been marked, so that won't be an issue. City and legal staff have reviewed and approved this easement, and any questions, please?
Does anyone want to hear from the public desires to speak to agenda item six point ten? If not, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Move approval of agenda item six point ten?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point eleven.
Approved to convey a distribution easement to Duke Energy Florida LLC and further dis, and further described as the easement area located within lots one through ten of block eight, Magnolia Park, and lots one through ten of block five, Magnolia Park, less a right-of-way in the northeast corner of lot five of the plat as recorded in plat book three, page forty-three, Pinellas County, Florida, public records, in support of the proposed city hall development located at two-hundred South Myrtle Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, and authorize appropriate officials executing.
Thank you, Rose. Good evening, Mayor. Robert Casma, Public Works Engineering, Site Acquisition, excuse me, Real Estate Coordinator. In brief again, the presented perpetual Duke Energy Distribution easement conveys or grants full access to co-design order and install all necessary facilities in support of the new city hall now being developed. Upon final installation and within ninety days of the final in-ground construction, the attached, uh, exhibits need to be replaced with the current build, and that will be reported. Uh, city staff and legal have reviewed this without any concerns or questions, and if you have any, I'd be glad to answer if I may.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point eleven? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item six point eleven?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item six point twelve.
Approved purchase order of Flowtech Environmental LLC of Miami Beach, Florida for stormwater conveyance, pipe, and structure cleaning, inspecting, lining, and repair services, and not to exceed amounts of two million dollars for an initial one-year term with option for two additional one-year terms on a unit price basis pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warrantess section two-point-five-six-three per n-one per n-c, piggyback, and authorize appropriate officials executing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, Ed Willmuss again, uh, Stormwater, seeking your consent and approval for this, um, contract with, uh, Flowtech Environmental to provide, um, services for, uh, televising, inspecting, lining, cleaning pipes. Uh, basically, this would be the second contractor to supplement Inliner, and next council meeting, we will bring a third for, for you to consider basically an exact duplicate of this contract. So this contractor will supplement Inliner throughout the city, and again, with the three-zone process, uh, they will be assigned either to that zone or citywide as the need, um, as services are needed. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks. Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point twelve? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda item six point twelve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you. Agenda item six point thirteen.
Authorized a purchase order for Waste Equip Manufacturing Company LLC of Charlotte, North Carolina for the purchase of a roll-off, uh, purchase of roll-off containers, compactors, and compactor parts, and not to exceed amounts of four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars for term June three, twenty-twenty-five through June two, twenty-twenty-six, pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warrantess section two-point-five-six-three per n-one per n-c, piggyback purchasing, and authorize appropriate officials executing.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, Council members. Jacoby Washington, Solowis Assistant Director. Uh, the Solowis Department is seeking council approval to, uh, piggyback off a recently extended contract between Sourcewell and Waste Equip. Uh, this contract has been, uh, you utilized over the past three, uh, previous years. Um, with this contract, we will be purchasing roll-off containers, uh, compactors and compactor, uh, uh, parts. The amount that we are requesting is not to exceed four-hundred-and-twenty thousand. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Does there anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item six point thirteen? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point one-three?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Thank you, Rose. Man. Agenda item seven point one.
Mayor, seven point one is a second reading, and we have ordinance number ninety-eight-eleven dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating the west five foot of lot five and the west five of the south twenty feet of block four, all in block X of Bay Terrace and Bay Terrace addition, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in plat book thirteen, page twenty-two, in the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item seven point one? If not, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item seven point one?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Agenda item seven point two.
Yeah, one thing, just, just to be clear, and the last item was vacating the utility easement, um, in case I did not say that. So, uh, seven point two is ninety-eight-six, twenty-six dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the operating budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, to reflect increases and decreases in revenues and expenditures for the general fund, Stormwater Fund, Solid Waste and Recycling Fund, Parking Fund, Garage Fund, Special Development Fund, and Special Program Fund, as provided herein, providing an effective date.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item seven point two? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? Now is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item seven point two?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Agenda item seven point three.
Seven point three is ordinance number ninety-eight twenty-seven dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, to reflect a budget increase of two million sixty-seven thousand dollars and three-hundred-and-eighty-nine, providing an effective date.
Does anyone want to hear from the public desire to speak to agenda item seven point three? Hearing seeing none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda item seven point three?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimous. Move to agenda item eight, city manager reports.
Um, I just wanted to thank Amplified for the event today. Um, it was a great opportunity for us to be able to show off what we've accomplished, and so thank you to the team. We got to brag about the work that you all have done and what we continue to do to make Clearwater bright and beautiful. So thank you, team. That's it.
Agenda nine, city attorney reports.
Nothing at this time.
Agenda item ten point one, Councilmember Cotton?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, bringing up the Attorney General's letter, and the reason that I'm doing it, um, in the sunshine is because I've been advised that that's how we have to go about talking about this, uh, particular item. Um, and I've heard different levels of seriousness on how this letter should be taken from this is nothing to this is extremely serious. So having those polar opposite opinions, I went ahead and reached out to the AG's office because I like to deal in facts and not just what I'm hearing. I spoke with Mr. Dewhurst, uh, the Chief of Staff for the AG, and he stated that this letter was to be taken and is to be taken very seriously. I also asked him about any vacation issues, uh, that might have pertained to the letter, and he clarified that the Attorney's General, Attorney General's Office letter pertains solely to, uh, concerns about discrimination, and that the AG's office is not intending to involve itself in the vacation processes of the local municipalities. So for the reason of not being able to speak to each of you, um, individually and let you know what I found out, this is the only format that I'm allowed to do that in, in the sunshine for ethical reasons, and that's why I put it on the agenda so that I could explain to you the information that I heard, uh, from the AG's Chief of Staff. So, information only.
And, um, and just to piggyback on that, I mean, the letter was addressed to me, uh, not to the city, not to the council, but me directly. So I, I spoke with Chief of Staff Dewhurst three times. I spoke with him before the letter arrived. Um, and then I spoke with him after the letter arrived, and then I spoke with him a third time on, uh, Tuesday to really, you know, confirm what you said. If it's informational, then require us to take any action, and so, um, you know, if staff needs guidance or whatever, we can put that on for a session, agenda, topic, but, um, essentially, same information that you communicated is what he can communicate.
Yep, just that's, that was the only sole intent of this, so.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I thank you for bringing it up. I think it was something that we have to talk in the public about because we cannot have these discussions, and we do not, obviously, behind closed doors. Uh, especially with this one because there were so many variances and opinions on how we digested it and how, how we understood the meaning and the direction moving forward and how, how we take it. Uh, it was kind of confusing, I think, to a lot, um, which is slightly disappointing. Um, but I, I think there are things that we can have a brief discussion about and how we move forward with this because we can decide to not talk further about the underlying issue, and it's just gonna come before us again. I think we all know that. Um, I think it is in this council's best interest, uh, to try to be ahead of some things instead of just being reactive, uh, and I think this is another example. Some clarity that I hope that we're allowed to have a discussion on just so we can try to operate out in the sunshine but on the same level playing field, um, is I think we all agree, and there is no questions, uh, we cannot and we will not discriminate, and I think we're all in agreeance with that. Um, I think that the lack of clarity comes in that wasn't stated in the letter or in discussions that you had, or discussions, Mayor, that you've informed us, uh, here on the dais about is, can a fair market value still be attached to a vacation of a right-of-way? I don't know if we've gotten answers or clarity on, on that, and, um, please stop me, city manager, if, if I'm wrong. Uh, can assurances be attached to the vacation of a right-of-way solely regarding that proposed development property on things like calendar time, transferring of the title until the project's done? There is some conflicting verbiage in the letter, um, that doesn't give, um, clarity on that. verbiage in the letter that doesn't give clarity on that, as well, as well as the, is, well, I think we all kind of understood, but I'm not putting words in your mouth, is there cannot be any quid pro quo attached to it, so meaning we cannot put assurances attached to other properties, not involved in this development proposal on that vacation right-of-way. And I think those three or four things, we lack clarity, and we don't have those discussions. I think it's important if we come to some agreement, and it doesn't have to be here, and it doesn't have to be now, and maybe a work session, as you discussed, is a better place to have it, having that scheduled so that we can understand that. But my suggestion, and you can support it or not, is as if we ask the city attorney not to divulge his opinion here to us today, but maybe the city attorney's office can provide for us a memorandum of opinion regarding the letter and where our city's attorney's office stands, how our city attorney interprets this, because we are, most of us, sorry, Mayor, most of us are not lawyers, we're not in that profession, and this is where we lean heavily on that advice. So I don't know if that puts the city attorney's office in a bad place, but it is something we could talk about, but would we be willing to maybe give 10 days or something to provide to us as a council, not outside of that, but provide to, obviously, it becomes part of the sunshine, a memorandum of opinion regarding that letter. Thank you.
If I can add on again, the letter was written by, I mean, it was not written to the city. So, I think, I think we need, and what I'd like to do is I'd like to put on to agenda for the next work session, which is where, you know, we didn't have a work session before this meeting, so typically that would have been the appropriate. We put it on because you wanted to share something. I appreciate that, Councilmember Cotton, sharing what your conversation had been. But I think, I'm careful in this situation because long ago, I learned it's true, the old adage that the lawyer who represents himself is a fool for a client. So, even though I've been practicing law for 34 years, I don't want to give this council, the city, legal advice, but I did receive the letter in a different way than those of you who are not lawyers did, and that I don't see legal significance to the letter. It's not a court order. There's been no judgment rendered. There's been no evidence presented. There's been no arguments by two sides. It was really an informational and guidance letter, but it's not even an Attorney General opinion letter, as you would add, that really sets forth the law or really tells us what to do. In this case, if come the issues that you raised, if there's, if there's a dispute between two property owners or there's some, you know, question about who owns what, there are ways through the courts, we can, we can get direction on that. But in this case, I mean, I guess one argument is, the position is that the taxpayers own the property. And then we've got a property owner that thinks that because they own both sides of that property, that they own the property. But the way that's handled is a determination, and there are ways to do that, is it, you know, a court decides that, a judge sees both sides, and we argue for the taxpayers' position. For the benefit of the taxpayers, yes, it'd be great if it was city property, but if the property owner on either side feels differently or thinks the law's on their side, they would present their arguments. So, I think if we put it on the work session agenda for next time, it would give the city attorney a chance to kind of flesh those out in individual meetings with each of us too before then, and answer whatever questions that you raised here individually, and then we could come back together at the work session and discuss it more fully. I feel like the time between now and July 7 would give him a chance to prepare, and now that he's heard your questions tonight, that that might benefit us all in just slowing down a little bit, evaluating it, and trying to give the staff some direction on what our process would be going forward.
I will say that I also talked to Mr. Dewhurst again today to make sure about the vacation process and the clarity, to make sure that I was spot on with what I was sharing. And in that, he did go on to say that you just have to do what you would, for one, that you do for all. So, I mean, as long as the city is doing that and the city attorney understands that that's the way we're doing it, then it seems like we have pretty good direction with the processes in which we may already be doing. So, I don't think it gives you any more clarity with that portion of your question.
Yeah, no, I, I, thank you. I appreciate discussion. I just think that we are going to come to a place, we're going to come to a fork in the road, when we are, as a body, going to look to our city attorney's office and ask for guidance on defining this, and whether it's at that work session or it's before, I think if we're going to wait till the 7th and then come to that fork in the road and then push it off again, I think we're just prolonging and spinning in a wash cycle of dragging our feet. I think we know this is going to come before us. We should be on the same page in understanding our direction and what a process legally should look like, and what is our city attorney and our legal department's stance on their interpretation of it. So as we walk into this work session, we have the information, we have his team and his direction, and we're all on the same page versus where we are right now as we walked in here. We all have, and rightfully so, very different understandings, as I'm understanding it, of a truth and a reality. At some point, we have to come to what is our reality and our truth as a city, and we rely on legal advice for that. And I just think that why not get that proactively done now versus waiting, kicking the can, and we're going to be forced to make a decision at some point. So, I don't know if 10 days isn't enough, you know, maybe we give two weeks or by the work session, but I think we are going to have to have that decision and direction at some point.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess my question is what's the rush? What's the hurry? I mean, there's no, there's no pending request to vacate the street as of now, so I don't know what, I don't know what the hurry would be to put it on the 7th, the work session, take some time and allow each of us to individually ask questions, but also, and then bring it back for discussion at the next work session would be my suggestion.
And I agree with you. I think that there hasn't been a request yet. We think there's one coming. I think at that point, it would be a good time to have that work session discussion. We don't need to be jumping the, you know, doing it before we really know what the request is going to be. So, I'd be for just waiting for that to come in and then set something as in a work session where we can all discuss it.
Yeah, if I may, just for the record, we have had a question about the process. And so, in terms of timeframes, so I've provided what our agenda schedule is, but in terms of what the process is going to be, I, the staff does need some direction to answer that question. So, that can be done after that meeting. I'm not setting any timetables about it, but I do want to make sure that the council understands that we have been asked that question by the applicant.
Okay. Anything else?
So my question would be, what is our answer? And we do not have an answer to give them. What do we, to anybody, what do we say?
This is the question in regards to the vacation process, correct?
Correct.
Like, has it changed, or is there any difference of it?
That is correct.
Right. And has the interpreting of the Attorney General's letter changed our process or the process attached to it, and that's what we're unsure about, right? So, I don't think so.
Well, I think, I don't, I don't think we understand the significance of the letter. I think, I think from the property owner's point of view, they see it as more significant as what we might see it from the citizen's viewpoint as far as who, who owns the street.
If I may, so again, I will say that the clarification of the Attorney's General's letter pertains solely to the concerns about discrimination, and they were not getting into the grounds of vacation processes. So I would say that-
The process hasn't changed.
The process hasn't changed. What we do for one, we do for all, and nothing changes with that, and it continues as is.
And he was, he was clear in all three of my conversations, that vacating the street is a local issue, and they are only concerned with state law. But vacating the street process was a local issue.
I did get that same thing, that they weren't looking to get into the local municipalities or jurisdictions vacation process. That's what we have to figure out here.
Does that give staff direction?
Sure. Yeah, as long as the attorney, that's fine.
Is what "fine"?
The direction being, being provided by council. So I just want to make sure we're all, we're all in line with this, that that will be the direction. Our process has not changed.
Certainly, my opinion and the advice that I have given for many months to the council, manager and staff, has not changed, and I've not been given a reason to change that opinion at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think that's important to have these discussions because we came in here and didn't have that direction, or could we give it? So, I appreciate the discussion. I appreciate you bringing it forward.
For sure.
And now you have an answer.
I do, thank you.
Thank you, that's-
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. With that, we will move to Item 11, closing comments by councilmembers. Councilmember Cotton?
No discussion.
I have nothing.
Well, would anyone here from the public like to speak to this? We didn't take any action on it, but I'd invite anyone from the public who would want to speak on it.
Hi, Mark Bunker. It's not surprising that Scientology would run to the State Attorney General for assistance when he got a no vote here. I think it's important, you know, a lot of the points that were made here tonight, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you saying that this was to you and, and that there's nothing really changed here. There seemed to be a real threat from the State Attorney General, saying that it's religious discrimination, suggesting it, not even mentioning Scientology, and then, hmm, you could be in big trouble. Just putting a thumb on the scale, I think, for Scientology. I sent a video to the council this morning, a short four-minute video from Germany. Mr. Mayor, I forgot to send it to you, but it's called "How Not to Be Fooled by Scientology," and it was produced by the German government to tell people how Scientology operates. Nothing about religion, nothing about beliefs at all. It's just, you know, why you shouldn't, why you should beware their tactics. And the council should be aware of how they operate. They're not going to take no for an answer. At the L. Ron Hubbard birthday event at Ruth Everett Hall in March, Ms. Cabbage showed a video, beautiful video about the hall and the park, and at the end of it, it said he's breaking ground this summer, and I'm sure he will. He's going to go ahead and build the L. Ron Hubbard Hall and the L. Ron Hubbard Park. He doesn't need the street to do that. He wants it, but he doesn't need it. As you can see tonight, our parking situation here, Scientology's charging $30 a car if you wanted to park here to come to attend the meeting, which is why I think there's virtually nobody from the public here tonight. So, my, my feeling is, it's great that we're having a discussion about it. I appreciate the, all of this. Don't be scared. Don't be fooled by Scientology. It would be nice if Ms. Cabbage apologized for the harm he's done to the city. I don't think he's going to. It sure would be nice. And the Attorney General suggested that, oh, the point escaped me right now. Oh, oh, the point that he was saying you were putting restrictions or insisting that he put businesses in other buildings to get the street. That was Ms. Cabbage's offer. He came to you. So for Scientology to go to the State Attorney in general and say, "Look what he's making us do. They want us to put businesses in these buildings." That's Ms. Cabbage. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cabbage. Is anyone else here tonight like to speak to this? Seeing none, we'll move to Item 11, closing comments by councilmembers. Councilmember Cotton?
No, sir. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Councilmember Menino?
No, I do just want to clarify that I don't believe there's a $30 parking charge strictly for council's meeting tonight. There's, there's a concert this evening.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, so I just want to be clear to the, to the public that, you know, watching or, or listening, it's not a charging $30 to keep people from coming in here. There is a, there is a concert tonight, and I think some of us might be venturing over afterwards to enjoy it, but that's all I wanted to tell them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albert?
Nothing more, Mayor.
That's Mary.
Well, June is certainly a month rich with celebrations and observances. June is the start of the summer in the northern hemisphere, marked by the summer solstice. As a Catholic, I celebrate the Sacred Heart. In June, we also celebrate Father's Day. It also includes the observance of National Immigration Heritage Month, Juneteenth, which commemorates the end of slavery in the United States, and last, but certainly not least, Pride Month, a time to recognize and celebrate the LGBTQ plus individuals, their contributions to our city, to our community and our city government. I feel it is important to acknowledge and celebrate all groups. It fosters understanding, empathy, respect, acceptance and value of all individuals. The sense of belonging is crucial for mental well-being and social cohesion. With that said, I would like to end tonight by highlighting some positives that's happening in Clearwater. Just for example, in the last couple of weeks, we've had over 56,000 people attending graduation ceremonies, such a monumental memory, and it's being done in our city, in our downtown. We had Old Dominion, which boasted over 6,000 attendees, and just recently, we formally recognized all the excellent effort of all our first responders to the ferry crash incident, and the list goes on. So with that, I wish you all a good night and be kind to each other.
With this, we'll move to Item 12.
I thought she was dismissing us. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. With this, we moved to Item 12, closing comments by Mayor. Well, I'd like to just echo the comments, the Vice Minister Tucheda. You know, our, our community has pulled together in so many tremendous ways. I went to Hispanic Hurricane Expo, Preparers Expo, and great turnout. There were 200, they had 250 kits, I think, that were passed out, and they went quickly. Just so many different fab parts of our community pulled together in so many different ways. And we have so many special communities, and we want to celebrate them all. They are all an important part of our city moving forward. So, I just want to share that, to echo your thoughts, that this is the month, as you said, in June, we're celebrating all kinds of different things, and, and hope that our community will, will embrace one another and to enjoy this, this month and celebrate this month. I also want to say that the next time, after the next time we're together, we will have 4th of July, and Clearwater celebrates America, which has become a tremendous event in the history of Clearwater. For a while there, a couple of years, we were redoing the park and building the amphitheater, you know, we kind of went without it, and boy, it was great to get back in, see the crowd. The first time we had 4th of July and fireworks and music with the Florida Orchestra there for Clearwater celebrates America in our Cochran Park. So, this will be 249. Next year will be a big one with 250, but, and I'm sure we will work as a city to prepare great for, to be a standout city in the country celebrating 250 years next year. But it is always a fantastic community celebration, and hopefully those who are watching tonight will come out to celebrate America with us on the 4th of July. So, with that, if there's no other business to come before the council, we will adjourn the June 18, 2025 meeting of the Clearwater City Council.